She's gotten where she may.
I've been shopping here in town.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I've got. That's what I'm saying. I don't know that we can do it. We don't be doing it. It's more of a play. Yeah, I was like.
Oh. I haven't tracked down any of the names yet. We got a couple faces.
Oh, yeah.
She said one of them was based. Yeah. Back there. No. Back there right now. Precious city. That's just. There it is. So she's having all these things working. Um, we let her go. I spoke with one of you. That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't seen work. That was a couple of individuals who worked with the water department. It wasn't far. Yeah, they were actually vandalizing all this. Sorry. Well, that's a lot of my problem. I'm concerned that your city ordinance, right? Okay. Yeah, I, I really don't care about that. I really don't care about your players. That means about as much to me as if you're part of the city belongs there. I don't. What was your witness? Okay. They're not. They support the Americans or five from the US. Probably not. And we thought hospital was cheating. So we're not even going to shop in town. Now, whenever you, you pass this resolution, what you've done, probably inadvertently, I hope inadvertently, is to give a thumbs off and say, cool, that's all for a little attention. Was it doing some good thing? And it turned up because we've been working on this for the past couple of months since this resolution. Which we were, I didn't know about it until long time ago. It's like you're giving us a thumbs up or something cruel to us. And if this kind of thing continues and it continues, it's going to get to the point where money's going to take care of it later. It's going to end up trying something violent and something's going to end up getting hurt and killed.
Are you having citizens in town or city employees? Citizens?
Citizens for the most part. I have them, like I said, a couple of members of the water department, the individual who brought tobacco. It's, it's scattered.
Have you, have you complained or made any kind of?
Well, I have made so many complaints over all the decades.
Let me write in front of this as the first one up there.
I went to the police. Well, I've had three dogs shot that I've filed complaints about with the police department. They never bothered to do anything about it. We had a gun pulled on my wife. If I had Dwayne was down on Church Street, that's back when we were living on Church Street. No, this is just a citizen pulled a gun on my wife. We complained to the police about it. They never even sent anybody out. We've had, my house has been, was burglarized back when we were living down on Church Street. They left little Christian tracks all over the house and then stole a couple thousand dollars for the power tools. Once again, we complained to the police. Yeah.
Sounds like somebody's messed up.
Yeah. Well, I, we agree on that as well. I've had my vehicles vandalized, broken into. I've had numerous death threats against the police, against us. I had an incident where I was working up here at Walmart where I was poisoned up here at work, took the bottle I was poisoned in up to the police department. They wouldn't take it. They wouldn't honor me to us. Didn't care. So, I mean, this has been going on for ages and we've just kind of gotten used to it. But the way things are going now and with the escalation, not just so much in intensity of it, but the frequency of the assaults is reaching the point where I'm genuinely concerned that if some kind of a message isn't sent or something isn't done, one of these lunatics is going to end up, and I'm not just pushing anybody out here, it's just, that it's only a matter of time until one of these lunatics decides to try something violent and somebody gets hurt.
Where's your, where's your, uh?
We left.
When was the last time you might have complained to the police department?
Uh, when William Carroll sent me death threats across the internet, which would have been, how long ago was that? And that one, they actually sent out an officer and they told me there was nothing that, that he, that bragged about breaking into my vehicle and sent threats insinuating that somebody needed to track me down and have me castrated mainly because I didn't believe in Jesus.
And somebody, if somebody, somebody sent you that on the internet?
Yes.
What, what did you do for me? Is give me a list of every complaint that you've made that went to a police department prior to my term or my term.
Yeah, this goes back decades, but.
I, I need to see that list.
Okay.
To, I mean, because if it's an issue with the police department, then we need to handle it accordingly, you know, because we don't need to allow anything to happen that's not legally supposed to be happening. So if you give me that list and let me talk to you.
Yeah, if you guys have got any ideas on how to quiet this down to where she can start shopping in town and I don't have to worry about somebody doing something to my daughter.
Well, I'd be concerned if you're getting threats. I mean, you're not, you're not supposed to be getting threats from people.
I've, I've gotten threats ever since I've been living here. For the most part, I just ignore them because it's just some.
Well, I wouldn't ever threaten.
It's just some, some idiot.
And I wouldn't ever threaten your wife. And I don't know that anybody in this room on this council ever threatened you or your wife. Now, there may be some bad people out there that might do threats, but by then we need to bring them to justice if they are.
The most dangerous thing in the world is religious fanatic. And it doesn't matter what religion you're talking about. But whenever you start encouraging these people.
Let me ask you this. When we had that discussion, you said you told me that night that you had a camera.
Yeah, we have a camera out there.
And you hadn't been through, but you told me that you had evidence on the camera.
Yeah, I have some photographs. They're not entirely conclusive, but if you look, you can see what's going on. Like you can see one of the individuals spraying the tombstone down with paint powder. You know, we had to make our own tombstone because they refused to sell us a tombstone.
But what I'm asking about is you were specifically making complaints about water department personnel doing this.
Uh, they were in a water department truck.
Okay.
They were in a water department truck.
Can you, and I asked, I told you that day when you, you said you hadn't been through them yet.
No, I've been through some of them and we've, we've been debating about what to do about them and with the, uh.
Well, I told you that day.
We lost two more babies since then.
Well, if, if you've got.
And we've been tied up.
Okay. But if you've got evidence of that, I told you that day. You get it to me? And if we find out water department people are doing something, we'll take care of them. I told you that and I haven't, I have not heard back from you. So I want you to understand that when you're talking about these things, I ask you to, I ask you to come back and, and let us know and I haven't heard back. So I just want to make that, that claim. It's not like we haven't done anything. I have, you've never.
I'm, I'm not saying you haven't done.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, I'm not in here saying that you haven't done anything. Okay. Uh, we've been looking at different options and like I said, we've lost two more babies since then.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Okay. So we have been somewhat tied up on things and the pictures really are not conclusive. They're not something that I would be comfortable going into court and trying to prosecute a case against them. But there's enough there that especially if you take a look at what's been done to the stone, you can see people doing it. And you can see them gathering around the grave and pouring things on the grave and, you know, so on and so forth.
I just don't understand why they picked you out of so many different people because I, I don't know you from Adam's forest or your religion.
I've been a, I've been a local boogeyman here in this town going back twenty years.
I guess it's because I don't Facebook or get on.
Yeah, well, this goes back to my family is where it really began was with my family. It began with my sisters and my, and my dad and talking to everybody else.
I remember your dad drove a truck, didn't he?
Yeah, for a while.
He traded with me some down there, but I never had no problems out of your dad. I appreciated his business, him trading with me before.
Well, I've had problems with my dad.
Yes.
A whole different issue. But yeah, I've had problems with him.
You know, I, I, that's why, unlike Todd, we, if you've got, if you can show me those complaints that you found, they haven't been, you know, thoroughly gone through and followed through like they should be, then we're going, we're going to have to tighten up and see what the problem is.
Well, one of the first ones you might want to look at was whenever we were informed, now this goes back, this was seven years ago and this is the one that concerned that that really bothered me the most and still does is that nothing was done on this. We were informed, this was when my wife was pregnant with the only surviving child. The woman's laying over there trying to sleep and she's bored. We were informed that someone had offered a reward to anyone who could injure my wife badly enough to make her miscarry.
Who is these people?
Uh, the girl was a young girl in, uh, now I went to the police department and told them everything I knew. It was a young girl that stopped me up at Walmart and told me, look, man, I, I go to school with your sister. And I'm really, I'm really bothered because my boyfriend was approached and offered a considerable sum of money if he can, so she didn't tell me how much it was. She even told me who she was approached by, which I passed on to the police department. I don't want to say right now with everybody in here being here today. But she even gave me a name of the individual that supposedly approached her and I passed all that on to the police as far as I know, nothing was ever done about it.
That was approached to hurt somebody?
Hurt my wife badly enough to make her miscarry and offer us, offer a large sum of money if they deemed it so.
And who offered this person that? It, well, I'm not asking for a name, but it was no kin to y'all?
No. No, 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 no. It was, it was actually a supervisor at a place of business where both me and my wife worked at the time.
Why do you think they wanted to hurt you for me? You know, if anybody wanted?
Because there's a lot of crazy people out there that really have a problem with somebody that believes or thinks differently than they do.
A lot of no problem with that. They don't, they don't, none of us have a problem with that. Here, legally, if they're not doing their job when you file a complaint, that's where I have a problem with. And that's why I don't.
Well, this has been going on for decades to the point where I've just gotten used to it.
Well, I think, I think you don't need to give up and try and pursue justice. I don't think you need to do that. I think if you keep getting complaints, if you keep getting threats.
Well, we were reaching a point to where, just to be honest, we're reaching a point to where I was, I have begun reaching out to federal authorities over some of these problems. And I've also began a search for an attorney to look into possible legal actions.
I mean, that's, that's what you need to do to get justice. You've got to do what you've got to do to get justice. If somebody's threatening you and your family, you need to do whatever you've got to do. And that's why I'm asking for a list of the complaints that you've made that I'm going to see why they haven't been followed through with in the most recent back to the oldest. You know, if you keep getting complaints and nothing's being done about these issues.
Do you think that's the best way to throw a blanket on this and quiet down some of the fervor that's going on?
I don't know of no fervor except for you coming up here telling me you've got a problem with the police department for not going through with a dang complaint that you filed. That's the only thing that I know anything about. I don't know who your religion is or what religion is if you have a religion. I don't care. That, that, I mean, I do care for you because I feel like that you need, you know, to understand the way I understand, but I'm not holding it against you. I'm not going, I, I, I don't hate you for it. Nobody in this room will hate you for your religion or what you believe in. That's your choice. I'm not going, I'm not going to hate you for that, but I am going to be upset if our department's not doing their job to follow through with the complaint that you had. If anybody's threatening your wife, your child, or you, or your property, or a tombstone. We need to see why it's not being followed through with.
Well, I'll agree to that.
And I mean, I'm not throwing a blanket on nothing, you know.
I just need the fervor quieted down enough to where my family is safe and is communicating. We're not going anywhere. This is my home.
Give me the.
I've got three generations of family buried out here in the city cemetery. I'm not going anywhere.
Let me, let me see the complaints when you get them.
Well, I'll get you a list. I will put you together a list and I will bring it in and drop it off of all of the incidences that we can remember that we have contacted the local police department.
Have they ever had you sign anything at the police department?
The only time that I recall that they let me sign anything was on the reward that was put to try to injure my wife badly enough to make her miscarry. Most of the rest of these, it's never even.
They knew who that was that made that?
Now, on the one with William Carroll, they ended up, I ended up having to go to about six different police departments before somebody would actually take the report on it, including yours.
How did you know, how did you know William Carroll prior to his, for him threatening?
I, he came, um, I work at Southern Energy Homes. That's a trailer plan. My car was broken into up at work. Uh, there was some candy stolen out of my car. I keep hard candy in the back of my car along with my work because I have to eat hard candy to keep from choking in where I work. It helps me to be able to work up there without having choking spells. But somebody had broken into it and stole a handful of candy out of it. I really wasn't concerned until I came home, went online, found William Carroll trying to contact me, which I saw on there. He stated that he worked for Southern Energy Homes as well. I figured it was just somebody that I worked with. I didn't really recognize him. Yeah, okay. So put him on, contacted him. He immediately came in. I'd had a problem with Shane Hughes. And he came on ranting at me about the problem I'd had with Shane Hughes, talking about how people like me that didn't believe in Jesus don't have any problems having, shouldn't have any business having a kid. I informed him that such actions could be construed as a hate crime and I really didn't need to hear it, you know? So just go your way.
You got that on you?
Yes.
You got it, the threat on the computer to you?
Yes, and he then talked about.
Did you print those threats?
I printed them. I took them, I ended up turning them into the Lynn Police Department. I can probably still pull up a copy of it if not.
Is that why they have where it was in Lynn?
Uh, that's where the break-in of the car took place, which is where I finally ended up getting an officer in Lynn to take an official report on it after contacting the Winfield Police Department, going to the county police department in the county where it happened, which I think, which I forget which county now Lynn is in. And then they sent me back to Lynn.
Winston.
Winston, yeah. And then they sent me back to Lynn. Lynn finally took the report.
I can see where Winfield would probably tell you that couldn't have if it happened in Lynn.
Well, the break-in happened in Lynn. The actual threat happened here. I was at home and on my computer here.
Any threats you get from, like, you make a complaint down here, I need to know that.
Yeah. Now, like I was saying, Lynn probably may still have, you know, the, through the Lynn Police Department up there, which they've got a part-time, probably still has copies of that.
How long does that leave?
When did we have the problem there with William Carroll?
I think December or January. Hmm? Uh, I would have to end up looking over record.
I'll check on that one, but yeah. Those would be the only two wherein I've actually signed anything on. The rest of them, I tried talking to the police and they've just kind of, you know, ain't got time for it.
That would be a record.
And there's been several where we called and they never bothered to send anybody out, such as the incident where Dwayne pulled a gun on my wife, the three incidents.
Did that happen here?
Somebody shooting my dog, yeah.
Pulled a gun on your wife here?
Yeah. Down Church Street. Uh, it was what, twelve year ago, thirteen year ago? So, I mean, this stuff's been going on for ages, but it, it's not even really the intensity of it, it's the frequency that's starting to really concern me. Because it's getting, like I said, it's got to the point where she can't go out in public without somebody confronting her and getting up in her face about it. Now, they don't seem to have the courage to confront me, but my wife.
Does she, has she been up here filing a complaint and then something like that happens? Or she, what, you get in and you file?
She waits. She's got social anxiety syndrome. She can't hardly talk to anybody to begin with without, about having a nervous breakdown.
Well, and I would, I would, I know what you're saying. I do. I know what you're saying and I understand what your position is, but I, I really would like to see those pictures.
Okay, they're, they're inconclusive.
I understand that, but I would like, you know, I understand you're saying inconclusive and you wouldn't want to take them for.
And.
But I, I would like to, you know, I would like to see that.
Full disclosure here as well and being completely honest.
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about your position as the attorney for the city and you saying them before I have an opportunity to show them to any other attorney and get some advice from him on what I can or should do about it.
Okay, that's fine.
I probably will go ahead and run you those off because it's unlikely that we're going to find anybody to talk to us anytime soon, particularly given the fact that I'm not an exceedingly wealthy individual. We just get by.
Well, you're not wealthy. If it's a criminal act and you've got proof of somebody doing something they shouldn't do, you shouldn't need an attorney to file the charges. Attorneys mainly used for instance, civil cases.
Well, exactly. What is the criminal affair here of somebody vandalizing a grave is not the only thing that we've done.
That's destruction of private property.
Yeah. They've, they've sprayed the tombstone, which we ended up having to make our own tombstone because the monument company up here refused to sell us one. And some concerned citizens here in town called around to about every other monument company within fifty miles and warned them that if they sold us a tombstone, they'd see to that they were driven out of business. We were tipped off to that by one individual who was about what, thirty or forty at the place we called.
Why is that? Is there something?
Because we don't believe in Jesus. That seems to be the only driving factor that seems to be motivating these people.
Who's going to get on the tombstone that indicated that? Anybody?
Initially, we were just looking for a plain stone. Then we decided, uh, we were asking about the possibility of putting an Irish proverb, my wife being part Irish, which is frequently put on tombstones of children who died prematurely due to acts of God. And we're told repeatedly through several sources that that wouldn't be a problem. Okay? Well, we said if it was a problem, then just get us a plain stone. We'll be fine with just a plain stone with nothing on it, but no. Over fifty different places refused to sell us even a plain stone, including Larry up here at the monument company. So when we made our own, we just made one that actually had meaning and purpose to us and we decided the heck with it and forget about trying to not offend anybody and we just made the stone that we actually wanted.
Yeah, I just need, you know, I need to, I need to know when you file a complaint that's not followed through with. I'll try to help you get justice. And that's all I can, that's all I can, you know? I'm not going to cover it up. If you give me a legitimate complaint and they don't follow through with it, that's when I'm going to have to try to make arrangements to see what the problem is. I mean, I have nothing against you or your family and I mean, and I feel.
The long we've ever really wanted was just to be left alone and live our own lives.
As long as you, I will leave you alone, but I'm not going to leave you alone if you're not getting justice because I'm going to try to help you get justice. I mean, that, that, that's my responsibility regardless of what you believe, regardless of who you are. You know, I, I'm not going to choose to treat you any different than I would anything other people. I'm, I'm going to do it. I mean, but I'm, if you have filed a complaint with our police department and they did not try to assist you.
Oh, that works. But like I said, I mean, a lot of this we just, you know, I, I understand.
She needs to step out of her comfort zone when you're at work and she has a problem. She don't even let you get home. She needs to, she gets confronted and somebody threatens her down the hallway. She needs to come up here.
Well, I told her now.
Call from there. She's got a phone evidently. She can call from her phone. She can dial the police department from that phone while she's there with those people.
Well, like I said, we've had a problem with Shane Hughes, so she's gotten to where she very hasn't talked to the police department. Herself. Now, what I have done on that, I've gotten her, I've talked to her, told her repeatedly to not go anywhere without a camera and start filming this. I've told her just, hey, if you go, if you go to Walmart, take a camera, turn it on as soon as you step out of the car. If you go to the grocery store, take a camera, turn it on as soon as you step out of the car and just leave it running.
I just, I don't, I just, it's just so hard for me to believe that they picked y'all out of a particular unless it stems back from family.
It started with the family and it grew beyond that. It started with my family and it grew beyond that.
But I guarantee ninety-five percent of people in Winfield don't know your family. It's got to be one percent.
I've had family here ever since there's been a white man in this town stealing land from the Indians. There, there's been members of my family in this community.
But I had never heard of it.
And we date back forever. We've always been here. And we'll always be here. We're not going anywhere.
Give me the list. I mean, I'll try to help you. That's all I can, you know? If she tells me she's got a problem with Walmart and her company calls the police department, they'll follow through with it.
Well, what can you really do as far as, you, you're talking about legal action. Now, what can you really do though, whenever the type of confrontation is things along the lines of people coming up to her and telling her that they had joined a prayer circle praying for our children to die?
That's harassment.
That's harassment.
Is that harassment? Does that constitute legal harassment?
Can she do playback on that?
What on this? Uh, she's still fighting, trying to get a proven warrant on that one.
If she gets that to work, I mean, that's your proof if you're sitting there.
Well, that's one. We have gotten, we've gotten multiple cameras.
That's why I got them again with, nobody would tell me names or anything, so.
Well, it's just like, for instance, we had an incident over here at the hospital, at the emergency room. Somebody cut somebody's tires. They got a, they went to looking for cameras to see if they could find that showed where they did. Long story short, they got a commitment out of somebody that they'd done it and they told them where they threw the knife on top of the building. They went and found the knife. I mean, if you've got something on camera, on tape or whatever, you bring it to the investigator. I mean, he, he, he's not going, he's not going to shove you to the side.
Well, this is new as far as these cameras are.
We just got them.
We're pretty much just got them.
You're getting fair and sound. I mean, that's why we just now. Y'all read the paper?
Uh, really haven't been. And we've been too.
We just started putting cameras on our off, our cameras, our officers wearing cameras. And it's for stuff like that, for different issues that get confronted. I mean, we can go back and say, well, you didn't handle it right. You should have done this, you should have done that. You're in violation. You know, that's the purpose of cameras is to have a record of what's going on in front of us.
We've spent the last two years running back and forth to the hospital in Birmingham. We're just now starting to try to get our lives back and go on again.
Uh, you know, I feel sorry for you with the miscarriage.
I understand that. But I, I understand that and I'm not, yeah.
I just let me know if you, if she has an incident or something happens and it don't, but I need her to, to be able to report it. I need her to be able to go to authorities or go to somebody and say, I can understand if you have a bad route one officer, you don't trust none of them. I understand that. But in the long scheme of things, I believe this whole body of council members in me will, will, will make sure that our police department's doing what it needs to do and not choose.
Well, when the police department showing up at our door, pounding on our door, screaming at us that they don't need any warrant to come in and inspect our house because they've had an anonymous phone call from somebody who's never even been to our house and has never even spoke to us because there's been nobody inside our house for what, three years, two, three years now?
How long has that been?
Uh, and if he doesn't let her in to inspect the house, he's going to kick in the door.
How long has that been?
That was right after, that was right after Isis died. When did Isis die?
December twenty-third.
I know, it was December twenty-third, it was a year ago, just a year ago this December.
Yeah.
Uh, was whenever she died, so she usually showed up, uh, it was about two weeks after the funeral, uh, on that one, and they'd been out to the house, that wasn't the first time that, that, uh, local police and D H R had been out to our house because of anonymous phone calls.
So, you think D H R called the police to come out there?
If D H R goes out on a, on a welfare check, they have to care for something.
Does that constitute the police officer screaming that he doesn't need a warrant and that he will kick in the door?
If you, I don't know, if you refuse to open.
Yeah.
He can kick in the door without a warrant, he doesn't need a warrant, if he's got D H R, he can go in.
Because of an anonymous phone call from somebody who's never even been out to our house.
D H R, yes, sir.
D H R gonna act on them?
Yes, sir.
See, we don't have no.
Sure not, I mean.
Now, you know, right after, you do know that right after this, I consulted with, um, um.
Martine.
Martine, John Martine over it, and he told me a very different story, they really couldn't come in without a warrant, they'd have to at least get some type of court order. They couldn't just come in without any type of paperwork or anything at all, just because somebody called them. Yeah.
He knew they were.
Yes, he did.
If D H R gets a complaint on welfare check, they have to come in.
Welfare check, there's no welfare.
If it was an anonymous tip, they're coming in for a welfare check on the job.
That's a state.
They probably.
So, now, now, well, we'll, we'll.
What the officer had, but.
So, now, what you're telling me is.
D H R went out there, they don't, they already had a mission from the judge to go there.
Now, any, any religious lunatic in this town can call up every day of the week and we can have people out here demanding to inspect our home every day of the week who've never been in our home, don't know anything about us, simply because, uh, we don't go to a church they approve of?
Now, that, when you get into D H R issues, that's state, that's above us. But they, if they come to our, if D H R comes to our police department, says we need you to go with us to this, this location, they have to go with them to that location. And that's when it's out of our hands, it's in the state.
Yes, they have to accompany them, but according to John Martine, the only thing that the, uh, police are actually there for though, is to ensure the safety of D H R. To ensure that things do not get out of hand and that nobody ends up initiating any type of violence and, you know, keep it, keep a lid on it.
What he's saying is, if you don't open the door for D H R, now that's out of our hands, D H R is out of our hands, but if you don't open the door, that is a resistance. That's, that's, that's all he's saying. And that's when an officer has to try to gain access into that house, because D H R has a judge ordered to come to your house. You see what I'm saying?
If there was a judge that had ordered this, there would be some type of paperwork, not just people showing up at your door.
I asked for paperwork, there was no paperwork.
D H R should have paperwork.
They claimed there was no paperwork, D H R told us there was no paperwork.
I don't know that they got a piece of paper, they probably got a verbal authorization from the judge to go act. Or they presented information to the judge and the judge says, go, you know. Every time I went to have a D H R, they had paperwork. When I.
Have you ever talked to D H R about them coming to your house?
Well, we've attempted to on a few times, like I said, we actually retained John Martine for a brief time right after that, and he made a couple of phone calls on it and told us that if they show up again, uh, that he'd take the case, but we, we, you know, we'd have to pay him a retainer at that point, which we paid him a little stipend fee for his work. And we set some money back in the bank to pay him in the event that D H R ever shows up again, and so far, they haven't.
Let me check into that, I mean, he's the city attorney, he already knows what the law can and can't do for it all.
Because when, when D H R.
But I mean, if you're talking about a situation here where any lunatic can call up at any time and we have to let armed people into our house to terrorize my daughter, terrorize my wife, and go rummaging through our, through our home to inspect our home because some lunatic's upset that we didn't go to the right church to, to appease them.
But I, what I, I guess what, what I'm trying to say here, what we're trying to get you to understand is that's not our police officer's duty to ferret that out, that information out. That's D H R's, and D H R has ferreted that information out, decided they wanna go further, they wanna come investigate, they come and get a police officer, say you go with. When our police officer's out there, he's out there at the request of D H R.
I understand that, however. However, your police officer still have to behave under at least some semblance of civility and honor and dignity.
Well, that's.
Not, not, not behavior like, like what happened there, and then you don't follow that up by having a friend of you, by calling up a friend of yours to go break into the individual's car. You don't follow it up by, uh, threatening to take, threatening to take a legal sanction against the individual for quoting what you said at the doorstep, you don't follow that up.
Are you willing to put that in a written complaint, that that's exactly what that officer did?
You can look online and find it, it's on my Facebook page.
Are you willing to put that in a written complaint, that that officer hired somebody to break into your car?
I do not know that he hired William Carroll, William Carroll was bragging about having been friends with him for ages. William Carroll and his wife, Misty, both came on at the same time and both proceeded to, uh, berate me.
Can you print that out? Can you print that out?
Oh, off of the, yes, I can, I can still print, I can probably still print out most of that. Now, whether I've got the, uh, post there that William Carroll put talking about, uh, hunting me down and castrating me, that I don't know, that's not in, in a thread, that was an individual post, I don't know if I can still access that one. Uh, but I did make a printout of that and I did give a printout of that to the Lynn Police Department. Um, now, Misty knew a tremendous amount about our personal business and was demanding explanations for our funeral procedures on how we had buried Isis and what happened.
It's not her business.
No, it's really not, and that's, in essence, what I told her, it really wasn't any of her concern, I wasn't gonna explain myself to her. But the amount of information that she had about our personal affair was really kinda, was man about this case was really kinda disturbing.